Here.
Thank you. We have this time for the public comments and three minutes, state your name, address, and talk on any item that is not on our agenda. We have a couple cards here tonight, three of them. And Vance Yocum.
Vance Yocum, like little Abner. We're old guys that know who that is.
Why don't you spell it right down?
It's the only one in the country, that name. Okay, I just want to, I write a blog, fiscalrangers.com. I come here periodically, so I'm making a video of this meeting. And so the first issue I might say is, you may have seen Lauren Ritchie's column recently, last Sunday, and she starts right out saying that the cities need to have videos. I know you guys had one, and I've seen them in the past, and then you had to stop it because of ADA issue. But every time I visit a city now, I am pleading with you to bite the bullet, create videos of both the main meeting, the planning and zoning, and any workshops that you have, because it greatly would increase transparency over operations. And I think it gives you more credibility by having your meetings on video, so that people can see them. Next is, I noticed that you are going to get a presentation on this ISO study, the fire department, and I looked at that pretty thoroughly, and it's actually very interesting because there's a lot of details on all the stuff that they have to go through. And then I start looking at things like, well, you get points if you've got a ladder truck. And I start wondering whether some of this report, this analysis or rating system isn't by the capital goods industry, who want to sell you all sorts of equipment and construction and everything else. So I would hope you keep it in mind, because I did look at the ratings. I would like to hear if anybody here, because it wasn't in the statements, whether, how we, how you, with this new rating that you've got, compared to other cities around you. And let's see, you do have a small item about historic markers?
I work with this items that are not on the agenda, if you would.
Okay, I was just going to comment that that was a great idea.
Thank you.
All right, and the social media thing too. Thanks.
Thank you.
So you want me to come back each time then to talk about those as opposed to just?
If we do any resolutions on this, we have all the comments at this point.
Okay. Well, I've talked enough. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Edna Gonzalez.
Do I have to state my address?
Address.
Edna Gonzalez, 351 North Donnelly, Moundora, Florida. Guys, I am here today to give a shout out to Moundora Police Department. Today, embarrassingly enough, I ran out of gas on the way back from the airport on Wolf Branch and Brit. And I texted for help, and I was sent a unit. They gave me gas and made sure I got to the gas station. So, Moundora, please. Thank you. Thank you.
You'll get the road service bill. Go ahead, go ahead.
As Edna has taken her seat, I think we all could give her a round of applause too. She led the leadership team that's in the back of the room this evening. Five-fourth year.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much for doing that.
It's my pleasure.
And Henry Olendick.
Thank you, folks. I do have quickly some maps that I would like to pass out, if that's possible. My name is Henry, last name Olendick, 2359 Sheridan Road in Moundora, Florida. Just going to wait a little bit till you all have one. Thank you, folks, for allowing us to speak tonight. I wanted to let you know that the New Merchants Association has begun a campaign to encourage all merchants to park at the red lots marked on the maps that I've just passed out to you. All downtown merchants will be made aware of this campaign, and we are also reaching out to downtown landlords, so they can help us by reminding their tenants to not park in the downtown core area. This includes the new landlords of the Moundora Marketplace, which we estimate will bring about 50 new employees to our town. We will also continue to reach out and hopefully work together with other businesses in order to secure more employee parking downtown. In the spirit of collaboration, we would like to ask the city that these lots are giving some extra police patrolling, especially in the evening hours when the restaurants close. Furthermore, in order for this to work, we need to have a downtown police officer enforcing the four-hour parking limit. Since losing our assigned police officer downtown, the four-hour parking has become ineffective. We are basically back at square one when it comes to parking due to the lack of enforcement. So we put all this money into signs and creating this four-hour limit, but we have nobody enforcing it. So since we cannot enforce employees to not park, we can encourage them, but if nobody's there to monitor that they are parking there, then it's just back to square one. These measures are definitely only a Band-Aid to the, Band-Aid solution to the enormous parking dilemma we face as a city, which I know you are all aware of. We have an incredible downtown. We have approximately 70 retail shops and 30 food establishments. We are asking that you embrace Moundora as this tourist destination that it is, and hopefully find ways to provide ample parking for all wanting to come to our magnificent town. We appreciate your attempts at helping with parking, but the time has come for bigger solutions. Basically, we need a parking garage as soon as possible. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the cards, if anybody from the public wish to address any item that is not on our agenda, please come on up. Seeing none, we'll go on with the, our presentations. And Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So the Moundora Fire Department ISO rating improvement and recognition of employees. So Chief Griner is here to give you information in reference to our ISO rating and the improvement thereof, and a little bit of a background on that process.
Mayor, Council, Ms. Hood, thank you, or Ms. Hayes, thank you for giving us this information. Recently, the Moundora Fire Department was rated by the Insurance Service Organization. That is an organization that rates fire departments, every fire department in the country, from 10, which is basically no fire department at all, to one, so first-class fire department. We had previously had a rating of three and have improved to a rating of two. So that's a very good thing. The insurance service organization class rating, the public protection class rating that they give fire departments is used by insurance companies. It's one of the criteria that insurance companies use for establishing the rate that they would charge properties for their insurance protection. It's, it has a much bigger effect on commercial property than it does on residential property, but it is one, it is also a benchmark that they can use to compare what type of fire service we provide in Moundora to other communities. So as you travel down the 429, as it would connect from the south of us to the east of us, of Coe, Fire Department is a Class One Fire Department. Orange County, and a Pop Guard Class One Fire Department. Seminole County is a Class One Fire Department. So as we try to attract businesses and broaden our tax base, improving our ISO rating, it will be very beneficial for us. Our neighbor Eustis has a Class Two rating. To Barry's, I apologize for not knowing what their branding rating is. Their previous rating had been a four. Lake County Fire Department is a ISO four. So thank you for giving me a chance to tell you about our improved rating. And I would really like to recognize Rich Lower. We've got Lower was our team leader on compiling the information and presenting it to the Insurance Service Organization. I have a flag for him. Such an appreciation, the extraordinary leadership resulting in an improved ISO Class Two rating.
You know, one of our speakers in the public comments, I'm asked about numbers, and I noticed in the backup material for this new rating that Class Two reflects 1,597 fire departments across the country in Class Two. That puts Moundora in pretty good company. Class Three, from which we've just moved up, is 3,490 departments across the country. So Moundora has made a significant accomplishment, and there's more to do, Rich.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I think also I might just make a point again. I think the question was asked, and we have not presented to this council as a capital improvement program to purchase a new, I believe the question was ladder truck. So again, you know, Tim, at this point in time, do you, the need for the city?
So it's in our 20-year plan, because all things get replaced eventually. It's just not in the next few years.
Yes. So there will not be, at this point in time, obviously you've gone through CIP and capital, there's nothing in there now. So we just, you know, even though it may be a criteria, it's not something the city needs to waste money on at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
The chief, Acting Chief Val would like to introduce. Acting Chief Val, please. So the Chief Val would like to take a moment and speak about youth leadership and introduce our applicant.
The members to stand up, please. This is the Moundora Police Department's second annual youth leadership program. In cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce, city directors and the police department were conducting that leadership program. The class consists of 15 juniors and seniors, five from the Moundora Christian Academy, 10 from the Moundora High School. This is a five-day camp. They'll learn, they'll learn about municipal government and how it works. They'll learn from PIOs, field trip and to the news station, Arts Day, where they're doing glass fusion and traveling to the Ice House Theater. City Government Day, they'll attend a council meeting, which is what they do now, then they get to go back and do a mock P&amp;Z meeting. They just, their etiquette class, thanks to Sharon, our HR director. You guys all pass that?
We're all stuffed.
And then I believe Councilman Tucker already took them on a guided tour of Moundora and included a boat tour. None of this would be possible without the staff, which some of them are in here, consist of the Community Relations Bureau as well as the SROs. The students will receive a certificate at the end of the program, and they can add the program to their college application. So they'll be here for about an hour, and then they're going to head off to their P&amp;Z meeting.
So can we just go around and, can you introduce yourself and name the school that you represent, and if you're a junior or senior? Just come up through this way, yes.
My name is Kennedy Thompson. I'm going to Moundora High School as a junior.
My name is Hannah Dauntis. I'm going to be a senior, and I go to Moundora High School.
Watch the cars, watch the wires.
My name is Diana Mesdior. I'm going to Moundora High School, and I'm a coming senior.
My name is Keisha Lantigua. I'm an applicant at Moundora High School, and I am a junior.
I'm Alicia Hernandez from Moundora Christian Academy, and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Cheyenne Haynes, and I go to Moundora High School. Next year is my senior year, and I'm excited.
Hi, my name is Sam Heinlein, and I go to Moundora High School, and I'm going to be an upcoming sophomore.
Hi, my name is Obrose Clara. I'm going to be a junior next year at Moundora High School.
Madison Smith. I'm going to be a junior, we have DCA.
Yo, I'm Dylan Quinn. I'm a senior at Moundora Christian Academy. My name is Dylan Medo, and I will be a senior at Moundora Christian Academy.
Good evening. I'm Gabrielle Bonilla. I'll be the SJ president at Moundora High School, and I'm going into my senior year.
Hi, my name is Nish Khatari. I'm going to be a senior at Moundora High School next year.
I'm Amy Siskel. I'm going to be a senior at Moundora High School next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief, you've got a great group here to share.
Yes, sir.
If I may say something?
Right ahead.
I was with this group of young adults yesterday for two hours, and I'm sure they were glad when we got it back inside an air-conditioned building. But they were great. They asked questions, they were interested about the history in town. Best two hours that I've had in ages. All of them outstanding. One young lady was working, she was trying to save money for her car. Some of the other kids were just involved in stuff, sports, and just cannot say enough good things about them. And I think yesterday, they got fed by Tony at Fiesta Grande. So they're getting some pretty good meals this week. Where are we dining at tomorrow?
Ola Ranch.
Ola Ranch, okay. Somebody should tag along, they're really eating good. No, but thank you for letting me be a part of that yesterday.
Thank you.
And they had to tolerate Councilman Tucker for two hours?
Two hours. Amazing. They didn't get paid.
Sure. They get a badge of honor. Extra credit involved in that.
Okay, great. Let's continue on, and have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
Mayor, I have one change.
Right ahead.
Under resolution, item number four is responding to the interlocal service boundary agreement. Again, tonight I have before you, that we'll discuss it at a point in time later, a letter for you to acknowledge and for us to send over to the county. So we'll just move this particular resolution off to a future meeting, I would say July 2nd. That gives ample time for the county to accept our letter. Then we'll bring this back to you, but it's all related to the same information. So I'd just like to propose pushing it or continuing to the July 2nd meeting. Resolution number four, Resolution 2019-65. And also the first one, 2019-54, the applicant has? Thank you. Yes, the applicant has asked that we push the Resolution 19-54, item number one under resolution, to the next meeting or the date certain?
Not a date certain.
Not a date certain at that point in time, so we'll bring that to you.
I move approval of the agenda with the exception of the removed items, Resolution one and Resolution four.
I'd like to pull something from the consent agenda. Should I do so at this time or wait until after the agenda's been approved?
Basically, when I do the consent.
Got it. All right.
Thank you.
I'll second your.
Thank you. All in favor? I, I asked. Okay, consent agenda is ready.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number five from the consent agenda. We can discuss it now or go on the original and then?
What we'll do is, we're going to pull item number five, and it can have a motion for the remaining one through four. It's on approval. So I got, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes, I would like to move, I move that this, the, that we, that we go back to action minutes, beginning again with the regular session, May 7th. Just a little background, at December 15th, 2015 meeting, it was the consensus of the city council to approve action-oriented minutes, and city administration, city manager, clerk's office, et cetera, was in complete support of the policy. The resolution passed at the next meeting, which was 5 January 2016. And I'm just going to read a real quick list of, it says, listed below is what city council can expect in the future regarding action-oriented minutes. Regarding motions, the clerk will record who made the motion, who supported the motion, and then a roll call vote. There will be no city council deliberation in the minutes. Public comment will be limited to name, address, and a brief description of the topics discussed. During the course of a meeting, there is usually general discussion between the city council and city manager regarding items to be addressed. For example, a council member may wish to have an item on a future agenda for discussion, and there seems to be general consensus. The city manager or deputy city manager through the mayor will restate their understanding of what is expected, so there's clarity. This will be recorded in the minutes. So just as a recap, when the consider, the motion was made by Councilmember Rolfson, it was seconded by Councilmember Crail, and it passed with a vote of five to two. And so I move that we go back to action minutes. We have migrated towards more narrative minutes, and unless the council makes a decision to formally stop that policy, that's the policy that we have now.
I appreciate the motion, but I think what I'd like to do is to have time so we can digest what you said and put this on a, on an action item for our next council meeting, so we can discuss it and take a vote at that point, if that's okay with you?
That's agreeable to me.
Okay, great. And?
Mayor, can I make a comment about the minutes before we go ahead to approve them? In the, sorry, I wasn't prepared. In the addendum part of these minutes? Yes, getting to that. Page 152. Ms. Tillot's thoughts reads, Ms. Sutton shared concerns about the conduct of a P&amp;Z board member during a recent meeting. A motion was made by Mr. Rolfson to remove this member from the board. Ms. Styles seconded the motion. The council discussed the issue and voted six to one to remove the board member. Just want to play this for you.
That's correctional, I make a motion that Mr. Heinlein can be removed immediately from the planning and zoning commission. Is there a second to that motion? One second, for the second discussion. Thank you.
I apologize. I apologize. It was Mr. Mas, it was Mr. Massey. So that is a correction.
And I reported that out to the city clerk prior, and she said, that's what she said, and that's what I put on the paper. And I said, that's all good. We'll fix it, we'll fix it on the record. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Styles?
We'll also correct again the Charles Street convoy down to visit for the, parking is not in the packet, so we still need to add that to the packet.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item, consent item number five? Actually, not consent item anymore. Oh, I asked a motion? No, as far as I, we decide we're going to, instead of the motion, we're going to put it on next, next meeting's agenda item on agenda. Oh, there was a motion, okay. I'm sorry, I thought we were just going to do it. Okay. There's a motion to move that item to the, was, repeat the motion.
No, my, my motion was to, was to go back to action minutes.
Okay.
Or to revert back to action minutes, which I understand are still the policy. You proposed that, that we?
Did you change?
Delay this until, until the next meeting.
So you agree, you, that's why you agree?
I have, yeah, I, I have no issue with postponing.
Yes, that's, yeah.
So I withdraw that motion.
There's no second. So we're good to go. Okay. So it'll be on next, and so I'll just take a quick, all in favor, putting that item on next council meeting's agenda?
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay. And now we need the approval of item number five. Motion, motion for approval of the city council minutes sessions for the May 7th, 19, May 7th, 2019, the addendum.
No. We postponed all of item five.
Although just the action, did they vote on making them action minutes? Oh, my God.
No, because I, I, it's my understanding that we have taken that, that whole item off the consent agenda, and we will discuss the minutes at the next meeting.
Correct. No, okay.
That's not exactly what the, I, I think you all voted on. I think you voted to make the discussion about action minutes.
Action items. Making it an action, making minutes an action item instead of action minutes instead of whatever. That's, we, you know, we have, we have a consent agenda, an item was pulled, and so, but the, but this item was not moved to go to another meeting.
I move to, I move to delay approval of these minutes, both the 7th of May and the 21st of May, until the next meeting.
Second. And all in favor? Aye. Have you opposed? Okay. So that news also along with voting on that item, also voting on as an actual or action item in our minutes and the agenda itself.
We are already under action items. I mean, our minutes, that's our policy.
I realize, I realize, we're saying, right.
So that's standing policy as of today.
Okay. We got that all cleared up. Thank you all. Okay. Action, so Karen's resolutions, and that was for Spencer Cross talk. Resolution number 2019-70, Department of Economic, Department of Economic Agreement between Lake County and the city. Is subsequent, we have the tablet, please.
Yes, a resolution number 2019-70, a resolution of the City of Moundora, Florida pertaining to that interlocal agreement with Lake County stemming from the Florida Job Growth Infrastructure Grant, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for approval of the interlocal agreement, providing for the implementation of administrative actions, providing a savings clause, providing for extracurricular areas, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, we're, had the good fortune of working with the county on this particular project. The county had applied, previously just some history, had applied for a DEO grant or grant, and the particular project that was mentioned and put into consideration was not quite ready, so the city reached out. We were able to develop a process and by which we have presented another project that can be put in its place. And then the county can receive the funding as it would, would need to pass on those funds to the city to perform a function. The city would then basically reimburse the county for the next piece of a project on Round Lake. And I know that Joe Grisakis is in the audience, who would be glad to explain anything. I don't want to spend a lot of time at this point until the council asks for him to come up and give me the information that you might request. But we're very fortunate that we were able to do this, to continue seeing some growth over in the Wolf Branch and the Round Lake area. And it's a beneficial process for all of those folks there from a water infrastructure as well as a runway infrastructure in the future.
So we have a motion for approval?
So blue, second.
Thank you. Any comments, discussion from council? Seeing none. Anybody from the public wish to address this item?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
So when did we buy this piece of property?
Joe Grisakis Utility Park. Just on Round Lake Road, just south of the railroad track, there is a lot that about two years ago, the city researched and purchased. It was actually a big study on how we're going to provide services for the Wolf Branch area. And this lot is in a lower area over there, and it will serve as a master list station for the all-rayer Wolf Branch area. So we already owned the lot, and the grant opportunity came up to accelerate this project. It's really a win-win, because they're going to accelerate our sewer system, which allows development to come in. We will take the impact ease and then move them forward to the county to accelerate. the road project. So, it's, it's using the money twice to accelerate projects that develop the area.
Are all of our lift stations master lift stations, or is it bigger?
No. No, this is going to be a big one. And it will be staged, so it'll start off smaller, but it'll be able to have up to three motors, and typically, we have two motors and moving, moving wires.
So, when the lift station behind my house starts running, we can hear it pretty good. So, a master lift station must be louder. So, are we planting some kind of buffer for the people who live across the street?
Yeah, and will it into the lift station noise behind your house, too?
Oh, I don't, it doesn't bother us. It's not, like, waking me up, but we can hear it. So, and I think if it's bigger, it's going to be louder, I would assume, so I'm just worried about the people across the street from this future lift station.
Yeah, this is a, this is a huge lot that we, that we own, and it'll be pretty, pretty well buffered from neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Joe's description was adequate. This is a win-win, and that lot is in a rural setting. I don't think it'll disturb the neighbors.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none. Ms. Johnson, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Stiles?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-59, the Ward Place replat. Ms. Sutton, can we have the title read, please?
Resolution number 2019-59, a resolution of the City of Mount Dora, related to the minor subdivision replat entitled Ward Place, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for major subdivision replat approval, providing for implementation of administrative actions, providing a savings clause, providing for scrupulous errors, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Hi, yes, Mayor, council members. So, this property is on old US Highway 441, the, off of Heim Road and Park Place. The parcel basically will be split into approximately three plats, and will be presented back through the process. The DRC board has already reviewed and the city attorney, and we would ask that you approve.
Okay. At this time, we're doing a little bit of procedure. We're going to ask for applicant comments on this.
City speaking council, my name is Mary Ludwig with the law firm of Stone and Gurken Perlegal, and here with me is Francesca Marcus at the corner of Heim and Park Place, that the owner is wishing to split into three lots. We have other things in place, like deed restrictions to limit the type of growth that goes on the three lots, and will be happy to answer any questions if you have.
And, hold on that. And at this time, there's a public hearing portion on this, so anybody from the public wish to address this item? Okay, in discussion, so, any council member have any discussion, any questions? Seeing none. Have a motion. Go ahead, Mr. ...
Now, I have a question, if I may. I'm looking at the property, and I forget which word it's on. The sidewalk runs around by the beach there.
Yes, sir. The promenade?
Pardon me?
The promenade?
That's right. That's what it's called.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't know the lingo.
That's okay.
That's all right. I know a new word. The sidewalks want to be left intact?
Yes, that's already a dedicated exception to the title to this property, so none of that is being touched.
Good enough. Thank you very much. Have I learned something new? Coming up. Thank you.
No problems.
Any, any other council comments? Questions? See, I can have a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Second. Thank you. And Ms. Johnson, we have a roll call, vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
If we could have a new promenade, yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Ms. Stiles?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-68, amendment number two, to the St. John's River Water Management District for the Apoca Interconnect Project. Ms. Sutton, can we have the title read, please?
Resolution number 2019-68, a resolution of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, pertaining to and further amending that cost-sharing agreement with St. John's River Water Management District for the city's Apoca Replant Interconnection Project, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for amendment authority, providing for the implementation of administrative actions, providing a savings clause, providing for scrupulous errors, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This request is real basic. We've just, we're just asking for extension of time. We've reached out to St. John's. They've suggested that we go, come back to, through you, to them, and request the extension of time. As presented in the memo, it's about 60% complete of the 16-inch diameter pipe installed, but as with anything, the expected time of completion and the actual time of completion could cross, so we're just asking that you extend the time period, and then we'll reach out to St. John's and ask that they do the same. And they've basically granted it as soon as we go through this formality. Thank you.
Do you have a motion for approval of this resolution?
I shall move.
Second. Thank you. Any comments, questions from council? Mr. Crail?
Do we have an idea of the eventual completion date? And will there be a promenade?
We are shooting for August. We're just not sure these pumps are backordered, and with the China thing, with the metals and everything. But, this is just, you know...
So, we're, we're still hopeful that by the, say, the end of the year...
Yeah, we just didn't want to miss that window and miss that grant opportunity, so it'd be better safe than sorry.
Are there any negatives that you can pick up for this extension?
No, there's actually no, there's actually no negatives whatsoever.
Thank you.
Again, I think this was at their, excuse me, again, this was at their suggestion that we asked for the extension.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none. Ms. Johnson, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-71, establishing a hardship assistance program for the fire assessment fee. Ms. Sutton, can we have the title read, please?
Resolution number 2019-71, a resolution of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, pertaining to the fire services special assessment, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for the establishment of a hardship assistance program, providing authorization for the implementation of administrative actions, providing a savings clause, providing for scrupulous errors, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, as to your discussion with our chief of the fire department at the last meeting, he's provided you this information. He's provided you the hardship form as to your request at 50%. We've also extended the time period in which you can submit for the hardship to September 15th, and I believe all the other things that were consistent in the last presentation of a hardship form have been incorporated in this, in this particular presentation this evening, and he's here, and we haven't had any questions of him, but I believe it meets exactly as to your request at the last meeting.
Motion approved. Second. Thank you. Comments, questions? Ms. Tillot?
Okay, just real minor housekeeping. Well, first of all, thank you all. I want to thank my colleagues up here at the DIAS for supporting this. It's going to be very important, hopefully, to not a whole lot of people, but to those that truly need it. It will be, it, this will be a godsend. So, now to the housekeeping. Under, the very top of the attachment, which is the form, it says, "Application deadline 1 August 2019." Can we just have that changed?
We will. We will. To September 15th.
Well, I know, that, it's in, it's in number four, says September 15th, but just up at the top, the deadline there. And then, on the third page, we have the notary public stamp information twice. Is that intentional, or is it only the once?
We've corrected that already. It was corrected in the version, if it would have been, if you would have recened, you would have seen that it was correct.
It was not recened.
And the August 1st is same, but that's okay.
Oh, okay.
We had it out there, and we just corrected it and placed it out in the file.
No, my laptop was, you know...
It will keep two, two notary blocks in case there are two owners. So, each owner will have to have a separate notary block.
Oh, okay. So, there will be two notary blocks? Perfect. That's just, um, thank you. And I guess my other comment is, do we yet know how we're going to disseminate this information?
Again, I, Chief, did you reach out to the county? If you can come up for a quick moment?
To the town.
Yes, to the property appraiser's office, if you can reach out to them. Have referenced them.
I got an answer for them on that.
Okay. So, again, we'll put it on the trim notice, but we also hope to be, we'll obviously put it on our website, but typically, the trim notice is the way to reach out to the residents as to how we notify them of any opportunity to reduce their due taxes.
And surely, it can't cost very much to put a little word in the local newspaper about it either.
We can do that.
Right?
Yep.
Mr. Crail, then Ms. Stiles, can I ask you a question?
Well, I wanted to thank Ms. Tillot for championing, championing this. I think it's a, it's a good thing, and as she said, hopefully, we'll not see a lot of use for, for those with a limited income. I think it's the right thing to do, and thank you, Ms. Tillot.
I wonder if, just for, oops, lost it, ease of, or maybe making sure this information is read, if on the second page at the bottom where it says, "If deemed qualified for the hardship assistance, the owner shall be required to pay the first $50," maybe that should be in bold, so that they, just so that it's clear that you still do owe the $50?
Okay.
Uh, the second page of the application. And then, also, I tried to read this application as a person who hasn't heard about this for the last four months, and I think it's not clear, when you read this, that the total household income of all occupants shall be less than or equal to 50% of the chart. It's not clear if the chart is already 50%, or if you need to take the 50% of that number. So, maybe we should label the chart.
The chart's 50%. But, yeah, we, like, you know, that's...
And just to, so you all know, you're adopting the resolution and the program tonight. This application is fluid, and it will change with, if Ms. Hayes determines that there's something, other information that she needs, or that something is being a constant problem, she can make those changes without bringing it back.
And there is obviously no fee for this application, right?
There's no fee.
Okay.
And I will say that in out years, after this year, that the August 1st will be the deadline annually, so we're just moving that date to allow residents to, to make sure that they don't feel pushed.
Thank you, Mayor. The numbers that are there on page 230, which is the first page, those are the updated numbers compared to the last, the last council meetings' numbers that we got on date.
They were, they were correct. Yeah, they were correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Just want to comment that I think it's going to be a good program, and I'm going to probably be part of it, so, you know, we do have something like this for, for some of the residents who are, I'll be, I'm going to say desperate need of, for this, so, and it's, it's a very minimal, minimal impact on, on the city for anything, so, it's a good thing we're doing, and so I have no problem with this. And any other comments from council? Seeing none. Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Seeing none. Ms. Johnson, may I roll call, vote, please?
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
And we have now final reading of ordinance number 2019-07, a change in the zoning for the City of Mount Dora. And Ms. Sutton, can we have that title read, please?
Yes. For December 2019-07, in accordance with the City of Mount Dora, Florida, pertaining to the zoning classification change for that property located at 206 East Third Avenue, 230 East Third Avenue, and 230 North Baker Street, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for zoning district classification change, providing for modification of official zoning map, providing for implementation of administrative actions, providing a savings clause, providing for non-conflictation and scrupulous errors, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, this is a request to move from R1 to MU2. There have been no changes since the first reading, so we just requested you approve this required. Was there a change that you made?
Yeah, I, we actually do need to make a change, and I just noticed it, so I...
Okay.
Um, to the last section of the effective date, we need to add in that it will be recorded in the public records of Lake County, Florida, because this affects land, so we need to, once you adopt it, we will also record it. So, I just want to make that quick change.
It's a stamp issue, isn't it?
It is, but we still, we need to put it in, so we...
No problem. We'll include that in the, so, it is some time, this is a ordinance, a second reading of this ordinance. Anybody from the public wish to address this item? Public hearing portion of it. Seeing none, and back to discussion from council, any other discussion from council on this item? Seeing none, and I have a motion for approval?
I move approval.
Second. Ms. Johnson, may I roll call, vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Rolfson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Ms. Stiles?
Yes.
Mayor Jerome?
Yes.
For our leadership, real quick over there, the, if you notice that we have resolutions and ordinances, and there was a couple different formats for each one of them, so our attorney helped establish those formats, and how we had the public hearings, we're supposed to put the public hearings in on these things, ask the public to comment, so we do have two different styles of, of how we introduce ordinances and resolutions here. Okay. We're moving on here. Any discussions, so you have city manager, and put a few in.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I have presented to you a vacation leave request, June 21st through the 26th. Mr. Charles Rebel has agreed to, to be your acting city manager. Again, it's just a, again, a precaution I like to put in place each time I leave, in case something were to happen. The charter does not require it, but we do this just, again, when I'm traveling, anything could happen, so it's just for your approval, please. And I think that's, we've done that as a consensus in the past, but you, I don't think Would you, I don't think we've done it as a vote, has we, have we?
Okay.
No, I agree to see that.
I agree. Everybody agree? Not your hand. Click once for yes.
Are you taking enough time now? You gotta come back rested, the whole thing?
That's five or six days, so, but right now, that's enough.
That's enough for now.
So thank you.
Thank you for your need.
The next item on the city manager's report, there's a couple items I'd like to bring forth. Lisa McDonald, our PIO. I'd like for her to give you a little bit of information on the performance report from our advertising. And I think even earlier today, a council member mentioned, you know, metrics, and this was something we had planned on presenting. I think we gave you the information before, but Lisa was not here and able to explain it since her son was graduating, so, Lisa.
Lisa McDonald, Public Information. So if you have the performance report, this is metrics off the Facebook page for Fox 35. You'll see the different ad sizes and the different dates that they ran. What I wanted to explain to you was impressions and CTR. So if you look in the impressions column, if you have that piece of paper, what impressions are, are the number of times that an advertisement is displayed on Facebook. So if someone shares that, that also counts as an impression. So if you see something on your Facebook feed, and then it goes away, and you'll see it a couple of days later, that means somebody probably shared it, and it was, it re-came up to your feed. So you'll see March 19th and April 19th had the highest number of impressions. Tuesdays and Fridays are typically the most shared days for Facebook, the most viewed days for Facebook, so that's pretty good for us. CTR means click-through rate. The average click-through rate for any given advertisement is a .10, and we did exceptionally well. We averaged out about .23. So that's pretty good. So our click-through rates were very impressive. We had a lot of people responding to the, to the launch of the advertisement. At this point, with the advertisement that's on Fox 35, the actual commercial, I'm still gauging, you know, to see how well it's performing. I want to get with merchants probably by the end of summer to see if they're seeing any kind of uptick, if anybody's mentioned that they saw the advertisement. I actually did get a call from a lady yesterday who heard about Mount Dora and wanted to visit a Lakeside place. She loved it. Her husband's a history buff and is dying to come here, so. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer. Yes, sir.
Yes, excellent commercial.
Thank you.
The, just looking at numbers, and this is all out of my league. Now, impressions, the first for March 19th, it's 160,000-plus impressions. April 19th, again, about 160,000 impressions. May 19th, it's 80,000. Now, if you total the four numbers. I'm sorry. I got, total the four numbers for March 19th, it's 160,000-plus. Total the four numbers for April 19th, it's 160,000-plus. Total the four numbers for May 19th, it's like 80,000.
Yes, sir.
That means it's kind of.
It tapered off. It was the end of the ad run on Facebook, so it probably had run its course.
Okay, that's, yeah, I'm just, okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
It's also the end of, I mean, people start heading north the first part of May, too. So they may not be watching Fox News down here. Just.
Your ship has dropped off.
One of these things in Philadelphia, Fox station.
We can run them wherever you want. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then the, the final item that I just want to bring to your attention, and we'll actually place it under the city attorney's report at the next meeting, but I just wanted to mention it to you. We have a new magistrate, so we have reached out to Donley Law Firm. Mr. Donley will be performing our magistrate services beginning this month. Our prior magistrate had just been, had just reached out and asked to relieve the services. So it was a very simple letter, just one day, and the next day, he was effectively resigned. So again, these type of services, that's fairly common practice in some degree. It does not require a bid process, but we did reach out and go through our city attorney, as well as, she reached out to others to find an attorney that does practice in this form, and we have signed a contract with him. So it'll be on your city attorney report in the next one to show you that we executed a contract, just for your information.
Do you need any approvals for?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just information's all I'm providing.
Okay.
And I believe that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I do have a signature for the, for the ISBA, so I'll mention that, I'm sorry, for one quick moment. So we did write a letter, if I can read the letter into the record, to Lake County Board of County Commissioners, Honorable Chairwoman Campione and County Commissioners. The City of Mount Dora has received and reviewed City of Eustis Resolution 19-43, which expresses desire, the desire of the City of Eustis to engage in statutory interlocal service boundary agreement, ISBA negotiations with Lake County. The City of Mount Dora believes that maintaining positive intergovernmental relations is crucial and in the best interest of the citizens of Lake County. As such, the City of Mount Dora would like to take this opportunity to express support for and encourage the proposed ISBA negotiations between Lake County and the City of Eustis. In the very near future, the City of Mount Dora plans to identify its area and topics of discussion pursuant to Florida statutes, Section 171.203, to initiate similar negotiations so as to promote sound land use and planning activities and the efficient provision of governmental services throughout our county. We look forward to continuing to build positive working, positive working relationships with Lake County and supporting the City of Eustis so that all local government entities can support the residents of Lake County. And I've just asked that each of you sign this, and then we'll bring back the next resolution at a future meeting, in which we present to them the current JPA with the ISBA overlay, and we go through the proper channel of notifying them and giving them their 60 days, as well as the county and anyone else. So afterwards, if we will just take one moment and sign, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Just one of the items that we always talk about when we're doing all this growth and everything's going out on our east side, that Mount Dora, even though we're kind of like the lead city and a lot of the activity that's going on out here, we can't picture ourselves as by ourselves. This is all part of a regional effort. It's an expressity of op interconnect. There's the cooperation that we're doing with Eustis, with their water works, and then our water also, which we want to be doing ours shortly also. But it's, it's a great, it's great that we get along with our neighbors around here, and that we are taking the lead in doing a lot of the things that are happening in East Lake, East Lake County right now. So thank you all for your assistance on that. We have a couple board appointments coming up here. We have one for Mount Dora firefighter's pension, and that is.
So the Mount Dora firefighter pension, this is to prove Jeffrey Phillips and Mike Garcia applications to serve as the Mount Dora firefighter pension board. Chief Ryder submitted, I believe, this information. Would you like to come up, chief, for just a quick moment and provide that, if it's okay with the council?
Mayor, Captain, Ms. Hayes, thank you very much. Jeff Phillips has been a pension board trustee on our firefighters' pension board for three terms. This is a continuation of his service. He's gracious enough to want to, and be willing to continue to serve on that. And Mike Garcia is here with us tonight, has also volunteered to take the remainder of the partial term that Mr. Murray had. He's no longer in Mount Dora. So that term will go through 2020.
I agree. I have motion for approval of both his appointments. Move their first. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a vacancy on planning and zoning, and I'll do this either way. By your leave, I can do it now, or I can do it with the closing remarks that I intend to make this evening. It's up to you. We have real Phil's company with us, up to you. Let me do it at my closing remarks. Yeah, be fine. City Attorney's Report, Ms. Stone.
Yes, sir. There are a couple new items that you're probably noticing under my report. You'll start to see these regularly. These are the types of things that either, there's an agreement attached to them, and Ms. Hayes is within her purchasing authority. And so we have identified an agreement, reviewed the agreement, the agreement has been accepted, and she has signed this thing to let you all know the kinds of things that are hanging out there. And it also gives us a better record-keeping for Ms. Johns. So if there's an agreement that's been signed, she can find it easier, because we've noted that it actually, we've got a record that it's actually been signed. So you'll start seeing those under me. I won't speak to them, but if you have a question about one of them, you can let me know, but it's just informational to let you know that it's something we've done. So those first two items, they are agreements that you all approved the resolution, giving authority for those to actually be signed, and the mayor has in fact signed them. And as far as claims, we have no new claims. So everything is going well. And nothing for it.
And with that, Ms. Still, your number one.
I'm going to keep it short. The Community Trust gave out approximately $80,000 in scholarships this year. So thank you all to everyone in the community who, who helps keep that scholarship program going. And at 4:00 PM this Friday, at the Chamber Historic Railroad Depot baggage room, the Community Trust is pleased to host the Social Hour and Light Snacks for the Youth Leadership Group. And so I'm inviting everyone from council and those of you in the community who wish to interact and with these young people. We're hosting that. So we, as the Community Trust, this Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00. And if you want a finger sandwich, I would recommend getting there closer to 4:00 than 6:00. I have a feeling that they will be hungry.
Okay. That's all I got. Ms. Stone?
Sticking with the youth leadership, you guys come with your A-game tomorrow. You're coming to the bookstore to get schooled on being a small business owner, so sleep on your questions. And secondly, I wanted to remind everyone that next Friday, June 14th, is Art in the Alley. And the majority of the merchants downtown have agreed to keep their shops, and the restaurants are always open late, but have agreed to keep their shops open from 6:00 until 8:00 during Art in the Alley. So go downtown, grab a cold beer, walk around as you can, enjoy Art in the Alley, hit the shops. And we encourage everybody to come down and enjoy all the art and all the shops. And the last thing is, I need my colleagues' assistance, I think, with this. So since, since we, well, since this council voted to demolish the historic buildings at Third and Baker, I have been asking to get inside of the homes at Third and Baker, and for whatever reason, sort of, you know, wait for somebody to be in there, and you can go with them. So maybe you guys could help me make this a field trip, so we can get in there before they get demolished.
What do you want to do in there?
I just want to, I just would like to, yeah. I mean, this is an art town. If there's something necessarily that can be saved and turned into art and put somewhere throughout downtown to represent these historic homes before they go, that's what I would like to happen, before I walk by and see them as rubble.
We'll arrange that, whatever we can arrange as far as from safety issues and things like that, that we're, that we can do to keep everybody, to keep the council people safe. And some of those buildings are kind of really biffy. One of them, two of them are kind of bad, so. Whatever we're able to do, so, let's see if we have the staff to arrange something? P and fire department, chief cert.
Actually, that's a building official, so I think we'll have to check, because last I heard, there were some challenges. But again, I can check again and reach back out.
And if we have to, we'll just designate, we'll just designate somebody, and then if we have to, you know, can't all go in. If just maybe one or two people, then we'll just do what we have to do, maybe designate, maybe stalk along with another historical preservation board person or something to go in there with you, and do it that way. So if it's going to be acceptable to, to our staff and our insurance company.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's it? Mr. Tucker?
Okay, very quickly, because I think I have 6:50 on the over/under tonight. Oh.
We'll cut you now, then, we'll definitely make this.
One, I'd like to say thank you to the city. Recently, some traffic devices went in on Overlook Drive. I know that police did a survey, which I thank them for. And this is not anything I think that any other street would not have gotten. They, and they tracked at times 1,500 cars coming down Overlook. And I was told a very small portion of those were driving, but if it's a 5% or speeding, if 5% are speeding, that's still 75 cars coming down there and doing the, in excess of the speed limit. And it's, it was becoming quite a racetrack there at times. So I do thank the city, I thank the police department, Captain Hunter especially, for a lot. Also want to thank the police department for responding to a request that was made by a resident. The resident was having issues with a contractor, and the contractor was not a very nice person. So the police responded to her call for assistance. It's what I deeply appreciate in coming to this woman's aid. So I thank the acting chief on behalf of her. She deeply appreciated it, for being taken advantage of. And two other things. We recently, a couple months ago, we gave the owner of the marina, Joe, a very nice certificate for all his Christmas lights that he does every year. Well, this week, at, from noon to 4:00, Marina down there and Joe, they're having their 30th anniversary. Everyone's invited. Please come down between 12:00 and 4:00 and meet Joe and see the boatyard, and I think you'll have a grand time. He's a great guy, absolutely a great guy.
Saturday afternoon.
Saturday afternoon, 12:00 to 4:00. And I know there will be some ice cream, so get there early, because if it's hot out, it's going to go quick. And I think, oh, my last thing is, kind of the, piggyback on with Ms. Styles, that again, my offer goes. If you find any wood in there, and you're like me, I will be happy to volunteer my time to turn anything we can from those, the buildings on Third and Baker. Happy to make a table and chairs, happy to make anything and present them to the city as a keepsake from those buildings. Happy to do it. And with that, I will pass them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krail? Couple quick things. I want to thank Adam and our city manager, and I'm sure there were others involved, for lightning-fast response. We had a merchant, a business med spa on the corner of Fifth and Grandview, that had some questions about proper signage and things like that. And it was great that you all were able to respond so very quickly. She's delighted with the suggestions you offered. Secondly, I just saw in, I think it was this morning's newspaper, that the City of Orlando just passed, I'm going to say an ordinance, but I'm not exactly sure, maybe last evening, having to do with limiting the, no plastic straws, plastic tableware, plastic bags at city events and city facilities, and I may have some of that wrong. I would be very interested in learning more about that and seeing whether that's something that we might be interested in, in doing. And I don't know if we didn't touch with it. Maybe Ms. Stone.
Well, I can let you know that there actually was legislation that went into effect this session that said you cannot do anything as a government to regulate plastic, so, but you can take it on yourselves. And that's what the City of Orlando did. They did it for their own events, their own facilities, their own.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Absolutely. So you can do it for your own use, in your own events, your own places where you provide it, but you cannot pass it on to any of the shops or the restaurant owners or anything.
I think it would be a, well, I think we'd need to look at it, but I think it would be a good example if it's, like, something we could do. And finally, I don't know whether Mark Podolsky, oh, he's waiting in the corner. So I mentioned this to Mark, but I'd like to make the rest of the city council aware. At Lake of Mount Dora, we have ADA curb cuts for wheelchairs and electric scooters and things like that on almost every intersection. But there are three corners in the development that I think, I think just simple omission, those ADA cuts were not put in. And I hope that we can work with the developer, Medallion Home, and get that rectified, because there are certainly residents in that immediate area that could, I, use of those. And I know Mark's going to look into it, but just wanted to make everybody aware. That, that's a concern. Every other corner has them, but three rather new ones don't. So. Mr. Rolson? Or excuse me, Mr. Massey, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. At our last council meeting, there was some unhappiness during our meeting, and in the aftermath thereafter. That unhappiness involved one of my appointees, and therefore, I feel obligated to make some closing comments tonight about that. I haven't had much to say about this since that occurred, because I was delayed in listening to the audio of that 17 April P&amp;Z board meeting due to technical difficulties. The audio would run for a minute to maybe a minute and a half, and then it would recycle. I couldn't make it play, no matter what I did. I referred the matter to IT and to administrative staff, and eventually, the code was cracked, and I was able to play that for myself. There was a problem with interface between our recording equipment
There was a problem with interface between our recording equipment and Apple computers. Having heard the comments of the city attorney at that council meeting on 7 May, and finally being able to hear the P&amp;Z audio recording for myself, here are my comments that I want to share. I conclude that the removal of Mr. Hommage, and I need to include it in reference to him by name, because I'm going to thank him for good service when I conclude, but I conclude that the removal of Mr. Hommage from the P&amp;Z board by the council could have been done in a better fashion. We could have done a better job, but I believe that that decision was correct and should stand. In my view, this whole matter could have been avoided had Mr. Hommage taken a different approach. I say that because the application by the city to rezone recently acquired property at Third Avenue and Baker to mixed use from residential to construct a parking lot would have resulted from that board in a recommendation which would have come to the city council for ultimate decision. I can only guess at what he was attempting to do. I, I don't understand, but considering that that decision was an advisory opinion, not an ultimate decision, I'm troubled by that. If his effort was to simply say that there might be unintended consequences of the first-time application of a mixed use in the downtown area, he should simply have so indicated that. Would probably have taken two minutes for the board's time. That recommendation could have been a part of the consideration that came to council for the ultimate decision. There was no need to make that an adversarial proceeding. Instead, he gave the appearance of coming with his own agenda. He pressed that agenda at every turn. He dominated the discussion. He resisted the efforts of others who made earnest efforts to get him back on point, and he ultimately moved to defeat that rezoning application, which resulted in a vote of 2 to 5. He did not prevail. Kudos to the board, who considered the same facts as Mr. Hommage considered, and upon a new motion, they voted 5 to 2 to approve the rezoning. I give all the thanks in the world to Mr. Hommage for years of good service to the city, but I no longer have confidence in his ability to fairly and impartially serve as an advisory board member in that capacity, and I believe that the decision by this council to remove him for his conduct at that P&amp;Z board meeting was the appropriate disposition. Having created a vacancy by that decision, I nominate Doug Bryant. I pulled that nomination from the meeting two weeks ago because I didn't think it was appropriate, because there were, there were still questions in the air, and I myself had not had the opportunity to play that tape. I pulled that nomination at that time. I, I would tonight nominate, for your approval, Doug Bryant. Doug Bryant is a resident in Wrightson, Mount Dora. He's out of the country right now. He was not able to be here to introduce him to you, but you know him already, because he's provided valuable service to this city in service on the Charter Review Committee. He also conducts tours for Segway of the downtown. He's law-trained, and he's my nomination to fill that vacant.
I so move. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I was going to make some comments as well, but I think Mr. Massey has summarized them about that issue. Regarding the plastic straw issue and the governor's vetoed that legislation...
He did. That is correct, he did.
He vetoed that legislation. That, to me, is an indication of the governor's appreciation of home rule. It allows us to make those decisions, as limited as they may be, and so it, it's redundant for me to say how much this council values the appropriateness of home rule issues, so I'm pleased that that occurred. I want to express my thanks to the Youth Leadership Council for being here. What a great group. And to Acting Chief Bell and Corporal Garcia and all of those that participated. I saw Corporal Garcia come in wiping sweat from his brow. I don't know, I don't know what that meant. If he was overwhelmed or, or it was just hot outside, but you're a great group, and I hope you found great interest in the, in the value that this council provides to this city and the pride we have in, in doing that. And finally, I'll be gone on Thursday and Friday this week. The Florida League of Cities is having another meeting. I'm a member of the, one of the policy committees, the Municipal Administration Committee, and they have two meetings on Thursday and Friday regarding home rule and other issues, so I'll be attending that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, real quick, just want to thank Ms. Till for her service on the Community Trust Board, Distribution Board panel, to give away that, give away that $80,000 to our students in scholarships. I kind of figured that, and, but thank you for being, being appointed for that. That's a great, a great program. And speaking of those houses over there on Third and Baker, I received an email, which I will share through the city manager with everybody about maybe a week, week or so ago, and we're a family who's, I think, a large part of the city from years ago, and I think his name is Raymond, Ray-Bomb?
Ray-Bomb.
Ray-Bomb?
Ray-Bomb.
And about possibility of naming that, and I'm going to send you that email, and if you're all kind of in concurrence, just let Ms. Hayes know about it, and then we'll send it. We'll send the name to the proper policy that we have to go through the, you know, through our impartial and advisory committee to do naming. And I think if, from what I read from the email and their contributions to the city, the Mount Dora, it'd be very appropriate to do something, a plaque or something, either for the whole site, or if we do build a facility, to put it on the plaque on the facility that we do, and, or, you know, they, whatever we're going to do for that, for that area right there, for that, for Third and Baker, and that we can name it, it was a requested name, whatever we do there, you know, for the family name, and I think that probably would be appropriate, so I'll pass it.
Ray-Bomb's been in counties since 20.
I still understand, I think 21, something like that.
I think they had a hardware store.
Must have been a real big influx of people here in 1921, and a lot of things happened around here in 1921. It's a vulnerable history.
Fireworks.
Okay. And, and also for the, for the benefit of our, of our leadership group, if you think you saw a city council tonight that is definitely not representative of most city councils that you'll ever see, this city council is much better than everybody. And they're a great group to work with. As you can see, we get along, we have discussions, and we have, and we, we go back and forth, but in the end run, we, you know, we get together and we make good decisions, and that's what it's all about, making decisions what's best for the city. And as you go through your life and you get into your leadership program, always do your decisions based on what is best for the organization that you're working for at the time, and never go wrong doing that. So let's see, what else we got? Anything else for us for that? And that was it, sir. With that, I request the motion for adjournment.
Adjournment.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
I got it.